Go ahead and get started. It's like Sarah has just rejoined us. Welcome, Sarah. I was just saying good afternoon to everyone and saying we were gonna go ahead and get started. But do you want to add anything to our welcome before we hand things off?
Yes, I just want to say I'm for all work sessions, this is for informational purposes only and no decisions are made today. But also, this is a conversation about our capital improvement plan. And I want to make sure, Brooke, we've got public work that's I'm going to move over Chad Voight. And Doug Stevens into the panel to help talk about this and Laura Glass. Our capital improvement plan is is divided up in a couple of different areas. And so largely, we split the responsibility for managing this plan between the administration side, which is planning the facility side of the projects with with our director of maintenance, Dave Sparks, and our director of capital projects, Jay Zimmerstein and Brooke Sauer, who keeps us all on track in terms of the funding and the financing of this project. And then the public works team, which manages our bridge and culvert section. So I don't know if I think I volunteered Chad to go first in this part of the presentation. So he will kind of do, he will, I'll turn it over to Chad for the overview of the road and bridge section.
Hello, commissioners, give me just a minute and I'll get, I've got a presentation I'd like to launch here. And make sure I share it right. All right, do you see? A great big picture with the title on it. Twenty 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 two, road and bridge capital improvement plan.
Please see it, you're good to go.
All right, great, thank you. Yeah, so I'll go first. Public Works, I believe, has majority of the historically a majority of the funding for the capital improvement program for the county. So it's it's probably good for us to put a heavy foot down here. Let me see, I can get this to advance here. There we go. So in your packet, you've got cover memo and then several documents that I put together that summarize this. And at this point, this is just a draft, it's an initial view of a proposed 2022 CIP. And a lot of the numbers are are still being developed. And one of the biggest numbers to develop, of course, is what we're going to get for a CIP allocation for 2022. This table is a table that we've been using for several years in a row now. We've got prior year, which is 2021, in this case, CIP budget allocation, and then we've got the current year discussion, CIP budget allocation. And then looking out five years, just to sort of set a course. And obviously, the immediate question is, how do you get from 2.6 this year to 3.2 next year? And I'll talk about that more in a minute. We do carry a pretty large balance of CIP funds in reserve. And this is interesting, the county. It's similar to our health insurance, you know, we 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 fund everything upfront in the CIP, we're self funded, we're not bonding things, we're not you know, planning projects and then trying to issue bonds to to pay for those, and that's fairly unique. And it's also an immense advantage when it comes to actually planning projects and responding to needs. And so we can talk more about that, too. This this table is again, just road and bridge projects. And in our part of this CIP, we look at in the next group there, construction, engineering, utility relocations, those are the costs that we see when we do projects. And so these are all, in the case of 2021, it's a pretty good estimate of where we are about to go. And in 2022 is where we think we're going. And then as you move further out, the estimates become a little less exacting. Below that, we have a table of funding. And that's one important thing to note is that on the public work side, we get a lot of outside funding. We get K dot funds through different programs. We also partner with some local agencies, townships, other cities to do projects. And then we also occasionally get US Fish and Wildlife grants for some of our culverts. So Lawrence is listed there for a project that's coming up. So in that kind of summary of funding, at the bottom line, of course, is our end balance. And this does carry over each year with our funds in reserve. I gave you in the packet several sheets that list prior years with construction projects that were completed and the cost of those, I think that's good background. And you can see that when you look at the total for a given year, it really jumps around a lot. And that's the nature of these large projects. You know, a good example is the Route 458 project south of Clinton Lake was $6 million, but it didn't happen in one year. It happened over a couple of years. And so as you look at our fund balances, we had to carry cash, not only through those couple of years, but we had to sort of save up in advance to cover that fairly large project. So looking through, these are all obviously past years and then into last year, this year, and then looking ahead quite a bit, even beyond the CIP window. And the thing that goes out the farthest, of course, are bridge replacements, because we really need to be thinking about those long term and how they fit in in funding. I'll point your attention to, I think it's on here. The Kansas River Bridge. It's not on here, it'd be a 2030 something. But the Walker River Bridge is, yeah, it's also not on here. Coming up, though, and very expensive, the Kansas River Bridge at Udora is possibly $9 million. That's something that we need to start kind of looking on the horizon for in a few years. So here's a better snapshot of that history. And this is looking at the past eight years, which we have really good solid data on. And what we're now doing is keeping all of this in an access database. So the the numbers are pretty tight and good records on where the money came from and where it went. So those are our past CIP allocations in this column. And then we had our outside outside funding for that year. We had these construction costs, so these are actually improvements on the ground. And to get those improvements done, this was the actual total cost. When you take into account design right away, utility relocations. So back to the CIP allocation, you can see that we we do bounce around quite a bit. 2.6, 3.6, back down to 2, 3.2, 3.4, 3.8. There are different reasons for those in a given year in 2016, it happened to be the fairgrounds. Where some funding was shifted that year in the capital improvement plan to make that project work. More recently, the the changes have been funding for other projects, but then also uncertainty with COVID. So 2.6 for 2020 carried into 2021. And that was something that I don't think anybody wanted to stop and talk about. Are we bumping this up right when we were getting hit with a stay at home order? So when you look at what we're showing in the current draft at 3.2 million, it's really something of an average of the last eight years. And so that will that'll be the number that we need direction on and that you as a commissioner have to be making the decision on. And I guess on that note, you know, the the projects that we've listed, there's quite a bit of work that goes into taking that number and then balancing out what it could pay for and setting those project schedules. So when that number changes, then we reshuffle projects, extend timelines or shorten timelines, as the case might be. I thought this might be interesting. These are roads, bridges and culverts that Public Works maintains and that the county owns. And I did some estimates here, I think we've probably got about 2,400 acres of road right away. We've got 190 miles of paved roads, 35 miles of rock roads. And these are, again, just the county maintained facilities, 157 bridges and 1,120 culverts. So I was wondering what the value of those might be if we had to build those today. And, you know, at current replacement costs based on construction projects we've got recently, we're looking at $482 million worth of assets that we have in those facilities. And I think that's a good kind of point of reference for looking at spending, you know, $4 million a year if it if or 2 million in some years. It's really a lot of a lot of facilities out there that if you don't address needs, they the maintenance will pile up and get out of control pretty quickly. And that's a map that shows just those county facilities. So this is county routes, both paved and rock. It's all of our bridges and all of our culverts, kind of a snapshot of of what it is that we own and maintain. This is just the roads that we maintain. I thought it might be good to kind of get a feel for, you know, the extent of those where they are. And also point out that we still do have county routes that are rock roads. We've got 1039 out here near Lone Star, 460 is unpaved through this stretch. And some of these further out have obviously much lower population densities and they're primarily ag use. This is another map showing just the bridges, 157 bridges in the county. You can see that a lot of these bridges don't fall on county routes. And so, you know, that's something, if you see a project and it's on a township road, we still are responsible for a bridge, even if it's on a township road in the county. So that's where we get 157 bridges. Same thing is true with culverts, the over 1,100 culverts that we've got. A lot of those are on township roads. And if it's on township road, it's a culvert that the county maintains if it's more than 25 square feet of opening. So there's sort of a size break on a township road, whereas if it's on a county route, it's every single pipe in the road. So real quickly, just to kind of set the tone for how we prioritize projects. We sort of have a set of goals that is, I'm sure, common to most counties in our region. Number one, improve road safety. And, you know, we do have accidents and we're trying to minimize those. Minimize the severity of accidents. One way to do that is to remove roadside obstructions, increase clear zones. Another way is to increase site distance. And then pavement condition is is another key to safety of vehicles and other people on the road. Another subset then is repair and replace bridges and culverts. And we have to maintain a level of service with those that we know that they're safe and can carry traffic. And they're not going to pile up on us if we if we were to do nothing, then there would be some future year where we would have hundreds of culverts and dozens of bridges all at once that needed replacement. And at that point, you really start closing roads. So that's obviously something we want to avoid. But under that subset goal, we have maintaining our bridges in good condition, which is actually a technical term in K dot bridge inspection criteria. We want to remove load posted structures, remove functionally obsolete structures and avoid that future backlog. And then finally, system expansion was, which is not something that we're doing a lot of. We're really trying to provide a basic level of service with our roads and bridges. And we're not in the business of development or expansion. But there are projects, one or two right now that we're talking about that would be considered system expansions. One of them is huge, it's the Walker Rusa extension from Lawrence South to Route 458. So with all of that in mind, this is a map that shows kind of our current priorities. And this map changes pretty frequently. We we elevate projects or back projects off or push projects back or move them up pretty regularly, just depending on changing circumstances. So this map kind of sets, you know, geographically where we're focused. And one thing that I find interesting is, you know, a lot of these projects are bridges and culverts. And you can kind of see the Santa Fe Trail right here. Because it's on high ground and there aren't a lot of bridges and culverts. The same thing is true with the Oregon Trail going up here. So if it looks like there are blank spots on the map, that's that's really why. So with that list, then what we've boiled down here is this current list of capital improvement projects. So this is any project that would see funding within the current CIP window, so out through 2026. And that generated this list of projects. And in addition to the CIP allocation that the commission provides, there's also an opportunity to go over any individual project and discuss whether it's an appropriate need or a priority. So any questions about any of these projects would be great. So I want to jump then just into some groups here, road safety projects first. Trying to move along, so there's time for others here. So looking at road safety, the the number one key element obviously is traffic accidents. And we keep pretty good records in our GIS of traffic accidents. We've got a 10 year history here plotted that shows all of the accidents that were reported officially. And 26 fatality accidents in 10 years. And then an amazing spread of a lot of accidents and a lot of injuries and a lot of property damage. And then looking at 20 years, there were 49 fatalities in Douglas County on county and township roads. I think, you know, some of this data includes that this one actually might be US 59 highway. When you get on the state roads, the data overlap kind of gets a little bit unclear sometimes, but this might be K 10. But still, 49 fatalities are in our local system that obviously we want to do something about. So looking at that issue specifically, we completed a project two or three years ago. This was Route 458 south of Clinton Lake, $6.6 million. And we improved several curves and put shoulders on the road. What I wanted to point out today was, in the three years prior to the construction of that project, this is a map of the accidents in those three years. And there were three fatalities and five injury accidents. In the three years since we've completed that project, we've had two injury accidents and far fewer property damage. And that's a tangible impact that we've had on that section of road. And that's a permanent improvement and will continue to, you know, have better safety throughout the years. A similar project we just completed, if you went out on Haskell and continued south on around 1055, we just put shoulders on that stretch of road. There were two fatalities in the last 20 years on that stretch that also should be mitigated in the future by the improvements that were made there for two and a half million dollars for a mile and a half road. Looking ahead, we want to next year do this project on Route 10 or Route Route 458, where 1055 intersects on the mile between E 1500 and E 1600. We want to make similar improvements and work on some site distances issues and put shoulders on that if you see on the map there, there's kind of a dog leg. And at that point, in the dog leg, there's a an intersection of two county routes. It's problematic and it's currently a three way stop or a two way stop, sorry. What we were thinking, a good option would be there would be a roll roundabout. And this hot off the press is a first draft from our designer of what that might look like. We're getting some consulting help on this, but this is an issue that might draw some attention and opinions from the public. So keep that on the horizon in your minds and and we'll be back to talk about that more. But around about in the county, this would be the first, this would be a very good solution for this location. So I'm going to be coming back hopefully with some specifics about that. Further out then, following year, we want to do improvements that Route 460 and 1061 in the southeast part of the county where there are repeated accidents at a limited site distance location. And moving on, culvert projects, there's a map of just our culverts. There's a good picture of the guys last year, the county crew replacing culvert on a township road that was a double metal pipe with a concrete head wall on it. And that kind of work is done regularly by county crews and we have a CIP line item for that. And each year, we try to replace several culverts. And we've gotten very effective at that work and that's really good to have that solid funding there. This is a project that we saw recently when we were talking about some development issues. And this project is something we want to get done late this year, replace this culvert on E 1000 Road within the Lawrence Urban Growth Area. This is a project on Route 1061 where we're going to replace five culverts. And you recently approved a construction contract for that, so we'll be closing Route 1061 very soon. Moving on to bridge projects, I wanted to start bridge projects kind of with a national snapshot here. The ASC gives a report card nationally every year of infrastructure. And you can look at bridges specifically, you can look at Kansas specifically. One interesting thing is that Kansas ranks first in the nation for the highest percentage of good condition bridges on the national system and the third fewest in poor condition. So Kansas is doing a good job, actually, and a C is a relatively good grade nationwide. When you go back to at the state level, this is a number of bridges that are in the whole state, 25,000 roughly. Locally, we have 19,300, Douglas County has 157. And you can see that at the state level, we've got 8% structurally deficient, Douglas County has zero. And we have 7% functionally obsolete and Douglas County has 4%. So we're above average within Kansas. And that's part of that is the commitment that we've made over the last 10 or 20 years in improving bridges. Each, every two years, we get an inspection. It's a a national requirement and a state requirement that the county gets an inspection of every bridge every two years. So the 2020 Bridge Report is something that we're using in the current updated CIP, looking at priorities. And we've got one bridge that's listed as poor. And it was slated to be replaced about five years ago and we halted the project because it's on Castle where the road got closed. So one way or another, we're going to get that off of there, but we're not going to spend the kind of money that we initially thought we were. This table down here in the lower right is our deficiency table for functionally obsolete, which means a bridge that does not serve its purpose geometrically or does not carry loads. So those are the bridges that we also are targeting in the current CIP. Out of those seven, we have plans to replace five of those within the next eight to 10 years. There's a map again of our our bridges in the county. And a bridge is defined as anything over 20 feet in length measured along the center line of the road. So there's a huge variation in bridges. If we call this a bridge, that's that's why it's more than 20 feet right here. This this is the Kansas River Bridge at La Compton, that's obviously a bridge. Couple of other ones, this is a bridge at Lone Star that's historic that we're about to put on the National Register of Historic Places. And that was done to mitigate the removal of some other bridges that are fairly old. This is the bridge on the project that I just mentioned on Haskell extended south where it crosses the Walker Rusa River. So just a look at some of our bridges real quick. And then this is a map of our load posted bridges, which means they don't carry legal loads and they're posted for reduced loads. And those are high priorities to address because, you know, concrete trucks, trash trucks, a lot of those loads will want to use those bridges and they're really not able to. Just a quick kind of how does a bridge get through a project and and get improved? This is a bridge that was replaced a couple of years ago. Just southeast of us here, it was built in 1958 and 1984 inspection photo, a 2006 inspection photo. And it got rougher and rougher. And this roadway is inadequate for high speed traffic. And the improvement that we made put guardrails and guardrails typically are $30,000 to $40,000 minimum on a bridge. So that's a big investment. But in terms of carrying traffic safely, that's something that's necessary. And then structurally, you can see upper right, lower right, that's the old bridge and the new bridge. We're trying to build bridges to be more durable, so we don't have these piling up on us and that we can extend the length of them. Looking at some projects real quick, we just completed a couple of bridges at Finland Curve. This was a really great project, we got $142,000 funding from Fish and Wildlife Service to make these passable for aquatic fish and aquatic life. So in the old old bridge, there was a perched concrete slab. And that's something that the US Fish and Wildlife wants to address. In the new bridge, there's a an earthen stream that goes through that grade plus the sort of rock ripples and dams and things that we put in this to make it natural. It's also a much more robust bridge, it's going to last a lot longer and it's really nice looking to the new one. And there's another one just like it around the curve. We also had a major bridge repair last year to replace the rocker bearings on this bridge. This is just south of Home Depot and Menards, near the Baker Wetland Center. And that's over the Walker Rusa River. And then we continue to plan for bridge repair projects like that going out into the future. We've got several planned, you can see on the construction line, there was that one over the Walker Rusa River. And we've got some major repairs slated for the years out. We've already got a contractor and they're about to start construction on this bridge replacement down in at the border, let's see, Walker's Township and Will Springs Township. And that's that's a bridge, there's Keith standing in the water down there, but that's a bridge that had a bunch of scour and a and a failing abutment right here. Which was allowing the road to to sink, so that's a high priority for us. Another functionally obsolete bridge, this is out in Marion Township and it's a the waterway is too small, the roadway is too narrow and the concrete structure is worn out. So we've got that one already bid to be replaced this year also. Looking ahead to next year, we've got an engineer working on, we've got several engineers working right now on bridge design plans, but this is probably the biggest. This is E 1000 Road over Washington Creek. It's a fairly significant bridge, it's also fracture critical, meaning that it only has two beams. And so if if a beam fails, you lose the whole bridge, that's the definition of fracture critical. More modern bridges are designed with multiple beams, so that if a an individual beam fails, you only have a sagging bridge, not falling bridge. But but that that bridge will be good to get replaced. Another bridge that we're having designed, it's a smaller one, but very narrow guardrails, and that's typically a problem with a lot of our structures. We've got that scheduled to be replaced in 2023. And then looking at that last group, system expansion and the big project that we've got on the horizon, the Walker Rusa Drive Extension. And we'll be, we'll have to talk more about this. But when K dot does get the South Orange Trafficway Connection made through on the west side, they have plans drafted, they're about 20 or 30% complete on the design of the plans for this interchange. And that would open up a path for us to be able to put Walker Rusa Drive through and connect south. This is all part of our overall county transportation plan, the metropolitan area. And the sort of current draft of what that road might look like is is down here in the lower right. The cost on this at 10.9 million, we are anticipating that we could split that 50 50 with the city. And those details obviously need to be discussed and worked out, but cost to the county would be half of that 10.9 million if we take this approach. Another project that kind of, it's much smaller, but has a similar feel to it and and we need to talk about in the future would be paving and 1200 Road near the Udora Quarry. They provide rock royalties at the quarry every year for the rock that they sell. Those are intended to go toward road maintenance. The reason we really need to talk about this is that the current proposal would be to sort of give them a loan or to do a project on a loan and then be reimbursed with proceeds over five years. Seems like a pretty reasonable deal for for what we want to do, but but we'll need to talk more about that, too. So trying to go fast, that's the end of my sort of summary. And I would like to answer questions or we can move on to facilities either way, Sarah.
I think if the commissioners have any questions for you, Chad, this would be a good point to take them.
Chad, this is Commissioner Portio, I really appreciate the presentation overall. And it looks like you have a really solid plan of what are our high priorities and then what's the long term plan? You mentioned that we pay for all of these projects with cash, so we often save rather than using bonds. I really love that, it seems like a very responsible way to do it. But can you just kind of help, help me wrap my head around why we've made that decision in Douglas County?
I think Sarah could help too, but my understanding is that years ago, that was just the direction that we took steps in. And then it was supported by the commission year after year. And some of those cash balances years ago were very large and and it took a lot of commitment, I'm sure, to hold on to those and apply those. But but it does give us the flexibility, you know, if a But, but it does give us the flexibility, you know, if a project is an emergency or if some other project becomes a higher need, that we can adjust to that and it also allows us to sort of look at the whole system and say, if, if we want to meet this set of goals and we have this funding available, you know, is that a realistic match? Whereas in a bonding situation, which I've been in before, you, you basically make your wish list and then you get a little ways down the list before you have to stop and reassess and you're at your bonding limit and you don't know when you're going to get funds again and it sort of shuts down the design process and the, and the planning process. So so having that, that sort of allocated fund sitting there really supports the planning mentality very well. But Sarah, can you, you have more history of how we got there?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, I think what Chad said was really helpful and informative in terms of with, you know, ongoing road improvement projects. You know, if you, if you issue debt for it, you've tied up that money for the life of the debt and, and so it becomes more difficult to then add on to that and be able to support new projects moving forward. I would say also in counties and we could, this is probably a whole separate conversation. You know, our bonding and debt capacity is, is more limited than cities, so I think that's also a factor into it too. And, you know, I think it really does, does represent, you know, this was a commitment early on was that you know, we're going to commit to our infrastructure, we're going to dedicate a certain amount of mill levy ongoing for this work and the problem, it's been eroded a little bit over time, but it is certainly, it was a commitment there to try to develop cash and not have that fall on future taxpayers.
Thank you.
Chad, this is Commissioner Kelly, thanks for bringing this slide back up because this was the one I had a question on. When I look at that CIP fund in reserve, can you talk about? Maybe it's just the way that it's calculated, but it's dropping pretty rapidly over time. I see Brooke shaking her head like, yep. And so can you talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah. And I've been doing this, working on this CIP for six years now and that's pretty much the way it looks every year. I think our, our planning has to be aggressive to actually implement something that's acceptable and we, we probably show spending in the near term years more aggressively than we can accomplish, but that's a good thing in terms of actually getting these safety improvements completed. So typically, that, that's, that's been the case is that in reality, the numbers stretch out a little more than, than what we show. And again, you can't plan to do that work unless the funding is there, so that's kind of the flip side of that situation, but and then the other thing is that over several years, we have tried to spend it down and not carry the balances as, as large as we've had in years past. I recall five years ago that the public works portion was twenty one million dollars. And so I think spending it down is good, just in terms of you know, you don't want to have more than you can use and there's a good balance there, so. And, and that's where knowing that, that three point two million and sort of whether that's a projection going out or not, that makes a big difference if we, if we were to dial that back. You know, six hundred thousand dollars each year, then, and suddenly that twenty twenty seven number is a lot lower, so that, that can change that too.
I think it's a really good assessment, you know, I think that the Public Works team is pretty aggressive in what they try to plan for inside the CIP. That's also somewhat unusual, you know, like Chad mentioned earlier, most of the time this is limited by funds. I think sometimes this is limited by capacity to, to do this work, so I think you see that reflected there and I think when, you know, Brooke shows you kind of the funding history between for the whole fund with both admin services and public works together, what I'd say is that also, and, and I, I'm somewhat responsible for this. You know, we've taken a pretty aggressive approach over the last ten years trying to use some of these funds to upgrade our facilities. And so we've pulled money away from, from public works in terms of this effort, you know, Chad briefly mentioned the Fairgrounds project, you know, that was a seven, eight million dollar construction project we paid for with cash and, and it took, it did take a pretty big hit out of the, the road, the roadside of the budget for a period of, for, you know, impacted what they were able to plan for. So I do think, and we can talk more about it as we approach this, but in terms of solutions as to how do we sustain, what's the right amount of funding to sustain what we need to sustain?
And I pulled up our, this is a report that we generate every two weeks when we meet internally to talk about projects and it changes a lot from week to week, but but that, talking about the capacity to do projects, these would be our inspected projects and we've only got three people to inspect, so that's one side of it, the other side is just the administration of, of contracting and, you know, if you hire an engineer, there's that, if you, if you contract with a contractor. And so, yeah, we, we, there's a certain amount of work we can do and, and right now I think we're kind of balanced pretty well with where that funding level is. And, and while I'm on this, I'll flip to page two, which is the in-house projects that our operations crews do. And again, it's all about capacity and trying to stretch out work and get as much done within a year as you can, but not, you know, be overloaded.
And then I had one more question regarding the Walker Rosa extension and our hope that the city would pay for half of that. We've had conversations with the city on other shared projects and is there any, do we have any concerns or, or anything about that? I get lots of questions about that project and and when it's starting and how much everyone's committing to it?
Well, Dave Cronin and I have been involved for a couple of years now in the planning of that area with KDOT and how it would fit our, our local system. There's also some involvement with Parks and Rec at Lawrence because of the Clinton complex and Dave is showing in the city CIP the same story that, that, you know, we could share this fifty fifty. It's really though, at this point, just penciled out and, you know, the costs are, are estimates as, as well as we can do. But I think as we go forward, we need to tighten up the estimates and then also look harder at whether the fifty fifty is the right way to go. On our side, we would have one point four miles of road that we're adding, which would be County Road in New Right Away. We also have a bridge over the Walker Rosa River. On the city side, they've got major arterial with median, you know, separated road and a new traffic signal at Clinton Parkway in proximity of existing neighborhoods. So both sides have large ticket items and a lot of design work that needs to be done and a lot of construction cost. And so fifty fifty may actually just come out in the ballpark of what is fair. You know, city residents or county residents too. So that will be your decision and we just need to get good facts and then have that conversation.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Chad, maybe you could stop sharing your screen and we can move to Brooke can pull up ours. We'll, we'll move through this pretty quickly commissioners and just as a reminder, you know, this is really just an overview so that you as commissioners can kind of get your funding and footing in terms of how we're going to approach this. And then we will bring back, you know, the twenty twenty two through twenty twenty seven, right, CIP as a part of our and ongoing operating budget process and you will approve the CIP as a part of that. So there's just so much detail here, I wanted to make sure you had some exposure to this before we jump into budget and honestly, we spend more time on it now than we will then. So for this first part in terms of the the balance and the history, I'm going to turn it over to Brooke to kind of just give you a broad overview as to what this, what this chart shows.
Thank you, Sarah, and good afternoon commissioners. This is a fund balance history, I prepare this every year and basically what I do here is I'll segregate each balance by department. So for facilities, we have a balance and we track all of those separately using a different ledger and then Public Works has their own balance so that we can see exactly what, what we have to work with. Typically, we'll do a sixty five thirty five split on the CIP allocation from the general fund and that plus any additional revenue. So as Chad mentioned earlier, they might get grant funds or outside funding from different agencies. So all of those revenues will show separately for each department, for each service in each one of these tables here. And, you know, we talked a lot about the uniqueness of paying for a lot of these projects with cash and you can really see this table is a great representation of all of those years where we're saving, saving, saving. And then you'll see a year like twenty seventeen where we start out with one point four million dollars because we paid for a, a whole facility project with cash. And then, you know, it, it goes into another cycle of saving and then spending again. So if, if you ever wanted to know where, where each department stood, this is a great table to refer to. And just pointing out that we started twenty twenty one, sorry, that's not twenty twenty with thirty million, thirty point five million dollars and then the fund balances for each of those. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Sarah now to talk about some of the projects and where we ended in twenty twenty one. And there's that, can you guys see that okay?
You, could you make that one a little bigger, Brooke, on CIP projects? Twenty twenty, if not, like hopefully people can, there you go. Now you have to scroll back. We'll just leave it there. You know, and the only thing I want to manage, talk about, mention as we talk about facilities and we start moving through what we're doing with facilities. Chad talks about his revenue coming from other sources in terms of grant funding or, or KDOT funding. The only real other source of revenue on the facility side is year-end project fund balances. So in that chart that you saw from Brooke, from, on the table before, that will reflect if there are year-end balances that we've moved to CIP. That would be a real distinction between what's our ongoing funding support and what do we move at year end. What you're seeing here and what was included in the packet is your twenty twenty, which was so last year, CIP project summary. Overall, if I could characterize where we are in terms of funding our facilities related projects, we're in a continuation mode on a number of things. I'm not going to hit the projects very hard because all, all of them have continued into twenty twenty one, so I'll talk about them when we get there. But I do on this slide want to talk a little bit about the completed projects that were done in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. You can see what we've wrapped up there in terms of some of those projects and, and that's really part of just our accountability to the, to the commission where we show what, what we, what the original project budget was, what we spent on it and then notes for how it's completion and if we have funds left over, that those balances are then reallocated to the CIP contingency. And, and you can see there on that completed project and how we ended those did those years. And I will, I will turn it back over to Brooke to kind of give you a put, to pull up Socrata and talk about where this information lies in Socrata. Would, so it's available for the public, for people to see and then we'll get into the project specifically, we start talking about twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Sarah. So in Socrata, I have uploaded the information from the facilities budget into this platform. So when you go here, there's quite a few ways that you can navigate this screen. You can click on these dots which are plotted.
We're still seeing the Dobby.
Oh no, okay, hold on. Sorry about that, guys. Bear with me here, just one quick moment. Can you see it now? Sorry about that. Okay, so there's a couple of different ways that you can get to this. Each one of these little dots is plotted to a point on the map and you can hover over those dots and get an approximate cost of that facilities project. And you can even click on that dot to navigate to that project within the, the platform itself. On the left-hand side of the screen here, you'll have what I like to call breadcrumbs. So if you ever get a little bit lost, you can go over here to this navigation pane and find your way back to, to where you started. So each of the facilities projects are located here. I have these listed as planned capital budgets, not adopted capital budgets. And then as you drill down into each one of these projects, you can see the project details. So typically there's going to be an image associated, there's going to be a point on the map to show you where that project is located. And then the details about how that project is funded. So this one specifically, this is actually not in the CIP fund, so to say, this is the mental health quarter since sales tax. But one of the projects that is in the CIP is this downtown space needs. So from this, I've also included a link to the project. And this is similar to the information that Chad was sharing with you a little bit earlier. And this is our oh, I might need to update my link, I'm sorry, this should be the twenty twenty capital improvement plan document, but this will show you all of the in, in process projects, completed projects, how we've budgeted for them and how we're allocating funds by each year. So I'll get in, I'll make sure that that link is updated later, but this is just a general idea of how you can get to that very detailed information from that platform. And that's all I have for that.
Thanks, Brooke.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you put us back to the twenty twenty one summary? I'm, I know I'm, you're all going to get seasick here going back and forth, but great. So as I mentioned earlier, all of our twenty twenty facilities projects have continued on to twenty twenty one. So I thought it'd just be easier to talk about it from here as to where we are in the current day and kind of what's happening on each of those. The first project you can see listed there is fire station number one. Just as a bit of background on that project for new commissioners, that's the downtown fire station where, that's co-located with the Senior Resource Center. Douglas County entered into an agreement with the city of Lawrence a number of years back to, to help pay for our portions of that project, both the LD-CFM portions of the project as well as contributions to the physical building for Senior Resource Center. The city, because they have better bonding capacity than we do, worked out a lovely payment plan for us and we pay them a hundred thousand dollars a year for this project and will remain in this project through twenty twenty three. We have approximately one point two million left on that project moving forward. Brooke briefly mentioned the next project, which is downtown space needs and I, I really this is a project that's a little less confined and firm. We began doing work a number of years ago to identify the space needs here at the old historic courthouse and the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center to determine what our space needs were to downtown. The project is, budget is listed as five million dollars. I can tell you that any sort of improvement to these two structures will be significantly larger than that. But we needed a route, we just, we needed something to be able to accumulate funds to be able to support that project because as we've talked about throughout this presentation, most of these projects are funded with cash. So, you know, I think we, I wouldn't, I don't think it's fair to say that five million dollars is what's, what would be needed for that project, but it has helped us so far to be able to do the master planning work that we've done and I would say after this, this presentation, what I'd like to do is bring back before the commission what the result, we wrapped up that space needs and master plan work last fall. I'd like to bring that back before the commission to give them an orientation as to what that project, what we learned in that project and then talk about how we move forward with that. Obviously, in that project, we'd be working close with our friends at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the District working close with our friends at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the District Court, the District Attorney, and others, as we will work collaboratively to talk about how we would find solutions here downtown. Also included into that project is 1242 Massachusetts, which is the project to the courthouse on the other end of South Park, which was the home of Public Works Administration before the relocation. So some of those projects have been moved in there, too. The next project is the stonework for this building that I'm in, which is the historic courthouse. Before I got here in 2010, so I think in 2008, 2009, the western front of this courthouse was was completed and refinished. We have never gone back through to complete the south, the east, and the north side of this historic structure. It is more than just simply cleaning up and shoring up parts of the exterior. We now have foundation issues, particularly on the southeast, the south part of this building. And we would need some pretty significant foundation work to help address those issues. This has been, this is probably the project that I think has the most, I want the commission to be most familiar with, because I think it's probably getting time to proceed on this project. What we've learned, what we learned through the master plan process was that if we are going to do any sort of renovation inside courthouse, we need to do the exterior first, so that we can make sure that that is stable and shored up. And you can complete all that piece and then do any renovation we would need inside the courthouse. So as you can see, we've accumulated, we've accumulate, 3.9 million is available in 2021. I've had conversations with our Director of Capital Projects and our Director of Maintenance and Grounds. And we're going to go back out to the design community that we worked with to develop those estimates and put together preliminary projections and determine if we've, if we're on target. And that this is likely a project we will bring before the commission to start in 2021, if if we're able to get it done. The next two projects are both associated with the Community Health Center parking, the parking lot and the elevator rehab. As the commissioners know, that Community Health Building, which is the home of Burt Nash, visiting nurses in the Public Health Department, is a joint city county structure. And we have generally, we have financed projects with that facility 50 50 with the City of Lawrence. City of Lawrence takes the lead in managing the facilities related to that project. And they had identified these two projects. And we have allocated for them in our CIP to keep that building in top condition. The next project is the jail security upgrade. We talked about this earlier this year when we talked about the deferred maintenance of this project. There was some significant investments that needed to be made in terms of jail security. And while the sheriff's office had set aside significant capital reserves from their equipment reserve, there were some additional funds needed to complete the projects. So it became also a part of the CIP at that point. The next project is the Fairgrounds Improvement. And while this was initially, you know, this project is started as the out, at the end of the massive Fairgrounds Improvement Project that we completed a number of years ago, there were a few pieces that did not get completed with that project. And one of them specifically is, there's, there's, we need to look at to expand our record storage and maintenance facilities that are located on that fairground site to have additional space. In addition to that, there's the roof of the community building, which is currently where we're doing vaccine administration, and a significant south parking lot improvement. So we be, we've put an estimate for that project aside. And then I think our plan is to continue to set funds aside for this project to complete these as we go. And so to work similar to like how Chad described, perhaps some of his culvert maintenance projects, where you kind of put a little bit of money every year to help invest in those. At some point in time, we may get everything caught up. But I think we've got some projects to do here and over the next several years. The next project is the Stratford Tower move. And I know Tony Foster's in the in the panel. We could certainly have a longer conversation about this. So I will, this is a project that's greatly in flux. So I think commissioners may be aware that the City of Lawrence is looking to replace the water tower at Stratford Road. While that seems to be very much a city project, and it is, the water tower replacement, that is the primary location for a number of our emergency communication radio system infrastructure is on that tower and at that site. Depending on how that tower is replaced, would mean, do we replace the technology, the communications equipment, or do we just simply move it? And what is possible with there? That project is really, I'm not clear on the timing with the city in terms of where they are at on that and what the costs of the project are, and how we would split the cost of that project between the City of Lawrence and ourselves. So as you can see, and, you know, Brooke, we've, we've, we've kept it on here. But I, I don't, I'm not worried about it at this current moment in time, but I don't want to completely remove the project, just so that commissioners know that we're still somewhat in flux as to what that total project will be, and, and what the county's contribution towards it might be. Then as commissioners see here, and this is based off of some conversation that we had earlier this year, related to the Douglas County Correctional Facility Deferred Maintenance Project, for improving the deferred maintenance considerations at the correctional facility. So we've split what used to be called a jail improvement project up between these two. So the, so the one on FAC 27 is that deferred maintenance. The rest is this, we have parked it at this conversation towards Douglas County Correctional Facility Space reallocation. If you compare this project, this project to what we had last year, you see that anything that we've not allocated towards deferred maintenance is on this line. Commissioners, this is just simply a way so that I can show you a balanced spreadsheet. I am making no considerations as to what this funds are and what happens with these. I know the sheriff is also on this, on this webinar as well, in terms of that information. This was simply a place for us to designate the funds that have been allocated for that project for this point in time. Obviously, this is a topic of additional conversation with the commissioners and the sheriff's office as to what would happen. It could be used for some sort of remodeling of interior space to make it more effective or efficient. Or the commission could simply decide that they don't need the funds in that area, and we could reallocate them. So at this point in time, it was simply a place where I could park, park the funds, and we, so we could have more conversation about what comes next. The, and then the last item, you know, that you see on there is our general contingency line. And that is really where we put fund balances from previous years and our ability to sort of respond quickly if a need comes up. These funds are incredibly important to what we do, to be able to respond if there is some sort of, you know, facilities related failure that we need to address, we can use this line item to help reallocate funds to manage that project more efficiently. And we've done that over the years. Jail security upgrade started as funds that came from the contingency line item then became its own space. I could talk about other projects there as well. We're getting really close to our five o'clock hour. Also included in your packet are some additional information about the special buildings project. Brooke can pull it up briefly. What I would say is that, you know, the commissioners are aware, we've got two kind of, we, we pay for capital projects in two places. Under Kansas state budget law, we are allowed to have a special buildings project fund. We levy funds there. Those funds pay for what I would call ongoing maintenance projects and smaller capital replacement projects. And it also has been used to funnel funds to the CIP. I don't think we're going to go over in detail those particular projects. Commissioners can kind of peruse them at your detail. You can see obviously that they're smaller in nature. But they have been really helpful and flexible in allowing us to respond to specific space needs, particularly, I'd point out, the improvements to 1006 New Hampshire and the movement of community corrections down to that location, which really helped create some breathing room inside the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center for the very dramatic space needs that we have in that location. I guess at this point, I would probably just stand for questions from commissioners. And if there's something you want me to go back over more detail, I'd be happy to.
This is Commissioner Portillo. I really appreciate the rundown, Sarah. This is maybe a super minor detail, and we don't need to go down this rabbit hole. But you mentioned that we finished, we finished that exterior east side of the building but never took care of, the west, south, and north. Do we know why we stopped with 25% of the building done?
Well, yes. And I, and actually, just to clarify, we finished the west side, not the east. At the time, when that initial assessment was done, the west was most crucial. And that was the side that needed to be done in order to shore up the, the building. It was determined at that point in time. And I'll tell you, like, I think they stopped when the great, you know, the 2008, 2009 recession hit, and funds became a little bit more difficult, and they thought the rest of the project could wait. We have talked about over the years, you know, the north end is really seeing some structural issues. We have some significant cracking. And then obviously, we have, we have some water retention issues in the foundation on the south side. I, I really feel, you know, I think we all have a particular affinity to this building and how important it is to our downtown landscape and to, and to our community. And it's important that we maintain the structure, and that it stays in good physical condition. So I think that's, that's why it really, to me, is time that we don't delay this any longer. I know, commissioners, we threw a lot at you. This is a lot of information. It's a lot of money. And really, I just encourage you between now and budget to, to, you know, review these documents, review Socrata, ask questions of Chad and I as we approach these issues. We will go over this information again, specifically inside budget and how we, you know, our, our funding allocation and what we approved for 2022. And then also, every time we do one of these projects, we always come back before the commission and have a more, you know, in-depth conversation on a particular project. But I think this is a good, you know, 30,000 foot overview as to the, our investment in our capital infrastructure.
This is Commissioner Reed here. I don't have any questions. I really appreciate all the detail and overview. And I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And Brooke, thank you especially for making sure to give a kind of a quick tutorial of the open budget section. I really appreciate that you just clicked through those breadcrumbs and gave a quick tutorial on navigation. That's important for transparency. So appreciate it.
We're really proud of our open budget platform. And, and, you know, Brooke and I and Jill and Kami will brag on it at any opportunity you give us, commissioners, about how easy and intuitive it is for individuals in the community and the public to click through it and learn more about how we spend our money. Sometimes budgets can be daunting, and we have to put money in certain places because the state tells us to. I think that document helps cut through that noise and really helps to articulate where our funding goes, both on our capital and our operating side. So and I know Brooke and I both use it just even on a daily basis around here.
If we don't, this is Commissioner Portillo. If we don't have additional questions from commissioners, then I suggest that we recess till our 5:30 business meeting. Fantastic. We will see you all at 5:30.
Thank you.